All right, I'm gonna start the meeting. Go ahead. We only have an hour, so I want to make sure that we have the most time possible in this joint meeting. I think they're very valuable, so I do want to start on time. And welcome, everybody, to our Ojai City Council and Historic Preservation Commission Joint Meeting, 6:00 PM, February 10th, 2015. May I have a roll call from City Council?
Councilmember Clapp.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Present.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Present.
Mayor Protemp Blatts.
Here.
Mayor Lara.
Here. And now could I have a roll call for the Historic Preservation Commission?
Commissioner Aikens.
Here.
Commissioner Bisachi.
Here.
Commissioner Boggs.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner McGrady.
Present.
Commissioner Rooney.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here. Sorry about the names.
So could Chair McGrady lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I was recommended, due to limited time for workshop, to possibly move the public comments to the regular meeting, but I'm gonna go ahead and take public comment, but I'm gonna really stick to the three-minute rule so that we could, again, give the joint meeting, the commissioner or council member enough time to talk about all the items listed. And I do have one speaker's card, Mr. Beam.
Please, Mr. Mayor, never.
And may you please step up to the podium.
My name is Craig Beam. I'm an attorney, live in Ojai. City Clerk's got all my stats. I've done quite a bit of work involving historic rehabilitation in San Diego primarily, including federally listed properties. Just had a couple of comments I wanted to make based on Ms. Wal's memo here. Number one, the concept that you would require of Phase One of properties over 50 years old just doesn't make much sense to me, and here's why. There are thousands of properties in Ojai, commercial and residential, that may be involved in this. Historic listing has to do primarily with three general categories of reasons. One is, is it relates to the attributes of particular style architectures, things of that nature. It may result, or may be associated with a personage of some importance. This is the home of, you know, Abraham Lincoln, et cetera. It may also have to do with particular historical events. In a broad sense, at least at the federal level, that's what's looked at. When you talk about imposing on individual homeowners or businesses a requirement they pay somebody to do a Phase One without any attributes identified that would suggest that they must, you do two things. Number one, you burden them, I think, potentially needlessly. Number two is, from a sequence standpoint, if this city adopts a policy, or a listing, or what have you, a local listing, under the Public Resources Code, you almost create a scenario where you must do an EIR to disprove some historic attributes, or resources, or otherwise adversely affected. I'm sure that's not the intent of the Commission or the City Council, but that is an issue, and that's an issue which came up in 2012, and I addressed the Council on there. And not only that, but I also provided the Council with references to state law, case law, and everything else. I think Mr. Blatts was mayor at the time and recalls that. The other thing I'd note is, as it relates to your particular things you want to look at, you should be aware of some problem areas. As it relates to, for example, the Presbyterian Church, understand there's a federal law that restricts what the city can do vis-à-vis various types of zoning-type regulations. You should be familiar with that. That is an area, by the way, that my firm works in. The other thing is, is it relates to a facility that we're frankly very fortunate to have, including my family, the Gables. If you're going to do a designation, that designation should be very clear and should be discussed with potential, the owners of potential property, especially as it relates to facilities that provide services to the community. Make sure that you're not unduly hindering their mission, which frankly, the Gables is one of a kind, we all know. So those are my comments, and I'd hope you'll consider those in your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak? No? Then I'm gonna turn it back to Chair McGrady so he could run through the list that the Historic Preservation Commission would like to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I wouldn't be truthful if I were not to tell you that the HPC enters the new year with no small amount of anguish over the destruction of Ojai Historic Landmark Number Nine, the NEF Lounge. I also harbor no doubt that some on this council feel this is not so, that the changes approved by this body are insignificant, only involving the removal of a wall, some changes to some finishes, and some windows. But that is not the position of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm an architect with nearly 40 years of experience, and trust me, I can read those drawings, and when the NEF reopens, it will be unrecognizable as the lovely iconic landmark this commission fought to preserve. This is not the outcome those of us on this commission worked so tirelessly for. Commissioners Boggs and Hill have logged, I'm guessing, cumulatively probably 35 years in service on this commission and provide invaluable institutional knowledge of the city landmarks. Commissioner Bisachi, a native of Ojai, serves, works as well at the Ojai Land Conservancy to protect our beautiful natural landscape, as well as his work on the Historic Landmark Commission. Commissioner and Vice Chair Walker, son of mid-century, noted mid-century architect Rodney Walker, has an encyclopedic knowledge of the architectural heritage of Ojai. New Commissioner Brian Aikens serves as well on the board of the Ojai Valley Museum with access to incredible historic documentation of Ojai's landmarks. And new Commissioner Brian Rooney, a teacher at Villanova High School, is determined to develop and nurture new preservationistas, new word, from among our younger set. All of us were deeply offended by the disrespect shown us by staff, city management, city attorney, and council in overturning the unanimous decision by planning and HPC recommending denial of work permit for the NEF Lounge project. But this ship has sailed, and this is part of your legacy, not ours. We are all returning to serve on HPC in the struggle to protect Ojai landmarks even after such a debacle. Our hackles are up, but our spirit is undampened. We pledge to work more closely with Community Development Department to ensure that never again will such a rushed job in the permitting process endanger another landmark in this way. I will be attending more Planning Commission meetings in order to speak out more forcefully against projects, landmarks or not, that damage our cultural and architectural heritage. We request council instruct the city attorney to review all landmark ordinances to ensure that the intent and the content of our landmark ordinances are in sync, and that never again an applicant can claim confusion over landmark law. And please, no more Brown Act seminars. We've got it. We at HPC will work harder to expand our historic sites of merit list and to codify protections for those landmarks. And we'd embrace an idea put forth by Community Development Director Kathleen Wold at our January meeting to seek an ordinance protecting buildings older than 50 years with safeguards against their demolition prior to HPC review. We feel this concept has merit, and we are heartened to hear the director's suggestion. You would have our steadfast support in pursuing it should you choose to proceed in this effort. Lastly, we are rededicated to the preservation of Ojai's cultural and architectural heritage with renewed and re-energized fervor. That is what it's going to take. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, those opening comments. Do you want to go through your list, or do you want to ask for questions or comments by the council, or how do you want to proceed? Because there is a good amount on the list, a good amount of items on the list, so I'm turning it back to you so you could guide us in this agenda.
Do you want to go through the list? Commissioner Walker? Thank you.
Could I, I would like to make one comment on your, on the points you made, on one specific matter, if that would be okay. I think since there was a charge to the council there.
Yes, there was. So that's why I wanted to know if you wanted comments.
Did you want to get any response or input in that regard, or not?
You had addressed a couple items or issues on those opening statement, so we wanted to know if you wanted comments from the council, or if you wanted to go ahead and move through the items on the agenda.
We'll go. We'll go ahead.
Okay, so you.
I don't have the document you have in front of you.
Oh, no, you didn't get this agenda? Does every, does all the commissioners have the agenda to this joint meeting?
I do.
Yeah, you do?
I do.
Yeah, it's just a sheet, this is a memorandum by, the date was January 27th.
We just got these, and it was because Rose Boggs asked if there was a meeting tonight. So this is something that we just had, just for a short period of time.
Okay, so if we could correct that? I mean, we got it last week when it was distributed, that's why I was assuming.
I got mine because I went through your website, and I downloaded the city councils, but we never got it sent until just a couple of days ago.
Okay, yeah. So if, if, okay. Well, it's really important to be prepared, and I apologize if, it shouldn't happen again, so I don't know what the miscommunication was, but I definitely, I'm more than happy to lead this and go through the items, or defer to staff to go through one-to-one?
So, so the memo is, we met, as Chair McGrady says, last in January, and we went over what they felt were topics they'd like to discuss, or proposed to you to discuss tonight. And so this memo that I prepared was to inform the council of the items that the Historic Preservation Commission had discussed with me, so you would have advance notice of what they intended to, or what they wanted to discuss with you tonight. So while Chair McGrady might not have this, this was what they discussed in January, so they're all aware of it. Okay?
I think the most important items on the list are the Historic Sites of Merit, Number Two, and Historic Preservation Fees, and Number Four. Two, Three, and Four. I'd just like to make a comment about Number Four. That was one of the items that I wanted to see on the list, but this isn't exactly what I proposed. This is just a small part of what I proposed.
Okay, do you want to elaborate on that item, then, and explain what you were?
You want to do this in the order, you said Two, Three, and Four, whatever, that's fine, we can talk about.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we touch on the items that the commission chooses are the most pertinent, because we do have an hour, so we want to make sure we have.
I was concerned about the fact that, since it isn't described on the agenda as a discussion item, that what I proposed, would we be able to discuss that in a meeting with you tonight, since it was not totally agendaized?
Okay, so what you're looking at is the memo from staff? This is, this is the agenda, did you get a copy of that, too?
I have the document, yes.
And this just says, right, so I think, I defer to Scott, but I believe we're fine.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, the answer is yes. You can discuss this tonight, based upon the description in the agenda, and I'll put it in quotes in the memorandum, sufficient.
So we'll start out with Number Four, so Commissioner Hill could take the lead on that? Yes, definitely.
What I had trouble with, I wanted to see us go on from where we left off. And the notion, what can we do to not get into the predicament that we were in with the NEF Lounge? And Chair McGrady very thoroughly stated the facts in that regard. So I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what life has been since I've been on the commission for 22 years. I've seen most of the years and most of the items that have been landmarked over that period of time. And just to give a little bit of history, our operating procedure was, we identify landmarks, we research their history, we discuss the possibility of this becoming a landmark or not. This is just our commission. And then we meet with the applicant in a meeting. Sorry. And we discuss the landmark, we vote whether this is an appropriate landmark, and often we put stipulations in the description, and this is a back-and-forth process between applicant and our commission, and ultimately, we send it on to the council. We send it on to the council, and all those years, we never had someone come in and say, "Our ordinance is flawed. You can't hold us to that, you can't hold us to that particular ordinance." We've assumed all over, all through these years, that we had, what we had in back of us was something that was going to protect the landmark. And my question was, at the time of our last meeting, and I asked this of Mr. Howard, I said, "Well, then, does that mean that we have a flawed ordinance, and that all 20 or 22 or whatever it is number of landmarks are at risk at this point?" And we want, and we wanted, what I wanted to see is that we have the landmarks all researched by council, to see if the landmark ordinance is going to stand up for all of those, and if it isn't, we've got to change the ordinance so that it sticks, and that we don't get in this predicament again. Because we were trusting all those years that these landmark statuses were going to be protected, and now we found out that they couldn't be protected. So that's, that was my thing.
Just a point of clarity, just so I understand, is it the actual ordinance of the process, or is it the actual agreement of it being landmark, whether it is land designation or milzaks?
Well, I'll refer to Mr. Scott, or Mr. Howard. When I asked that question, you felt that there perhaps could be problems with a lot of them.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't specifically recall that question related to all the landmarks. I recall a question related to the 12-month rule involving the ordinance.
That's part of it, yes.
In the 12-month notice rule. And then there was a question, there was a number of questions involving the NEF Lounge, specifically. Whether or not there was a resolution that was adopted, whether proper notice was given, that's what I recall. A focus on the NEF Lounge, and I think my opinion was, I think the heavy weight of the evidence supported that the landmark status was valid. Said, "But I don't have all the information, what I have, and what I was hearing was what I was hearing that evening." But I don't recall a discussion of landmarks generally being at risk.
I asked, "Are all 20 landmarks at risk in the meeting?"
Well, my answer would be, my answer would be, I doubt it, because I don't recall, again, I don't recall that question specifically, but if the question is being asked now, I don't believe that those landmarks, again, unless there is some, a stopple theory, unless there is some other theory that's out there that would be raised, that I really can't fathom at this point, I would say, "No."
Well, this, this was the first time that one of our landmarks that we proposed had been put into question.
I recall, I recall that discussion, yes.
I don't think this is.
Yeah, and Councilmember Wyrick, yes?
Yeah, I would like to emphasize the communication here between the members of the commission and the council, rather than getting into a long discussion with the council at this point. I don't think it's appropriate, because this workshop is about promoting working together between the commission and the council. I think that should be the focus, okay? And I want to make a general point and a specific point, okay? You made the point about, and Mr. Howard, I did hear him, I watch your meetings, you know, even though I'm not in attendance. And there was a specific, for example, pointing out of issues with the 12-month notice ordinance, and say, "This specifically needs to be looked at," okay? But what I'm hearing, that I'm a little disturbed with, just to be very frank with you, in both Mr. McGrady's comments and your comments, was, "We need council to research. We need council to do this." And let's be, be clear here, okay? We depend on you for advice. You are our advisors. That is the structure in the ordinance. That's the structure that we govern by. We appoint you, you answer to us, you serve at the council's pleasure, and we depend on you for advice. If the ordinance needs to be researched and looked at, one of the ways we're going to be asking for that to be done is looking for you for advice, to do the due diligence, and make recommendations about how that ordinance should be changed. It's a little backwards for both of you.
Are we to hire our own attorney?
Let me finish. To be talking about council working for you and the implications of your language. That was the implications of your language.
Let me, let me return a comment here. In what we were working on with the 12-month basis, we had several weeks to do this, to provide you with our counsel and our information.
I'm not talking about the NEF Lounge issue. I'm talking about adjusting the ordinances, getting the ordinances in sync, making sure they work, looking at going forward, are these ordinances working properly?
Right.
And that's not something that we do at your, at your request, it's that you research and make recommendations for us as how to change it.
And that was part of my question of clarifying exactly if it's the ordinance, or are they the agreements? We wanted to see if we could communicate to see what the, what the issue might be, so we could possibly start moving that direction, whatever. And I think that's, that was also, I was a little confused because you were referring to the ordinance, but is it really an agreement with the 22 landmarks that you're referring to?
Well, one of the things, as we sat in the audience the night of the appeals, we sat over there, and there were few of us, and all of these attorneys from Chicago, and their reserved seats were over here, and I could, would listen to their comment, and they would say, "Oh, that 12-month, that 12-month thing, we could blast that out of here. Oh, it's six months, that would even be too long." They kept saying things like that among themselves.
And that's, yeah, and I.
They colored the, they colored the air with their commentary.
Yeah, and I, and it's, I think we should refrain from getting into specifics. We don't exactly have the privilege to ask them what they were talking about, or how. I think it's really important, if we're really moving forward, to really be specific and clear about what our requests are, and how we could work to correct, if that's true, if it's, and I, too, watch your meetings, and even though I'm not in attendance, I do view them. And I think Mr. Howard's comments that meeting was referring to the language on the, on the historical, on the specific section on there, it was just a clause that said 12 months, and he was, and that's completely different. I'm not getting the connection between 22 landmarks and then the ordinance itself of 12 months, so that's why I'm asking, where, and if other commissioners might chime in to clarify.
You know, one of the things when I.
Can you use the mic, please?
When I first joined the commission, one of the first things I noticed was that there was a disconnect between what the ordinance actually says and how the staff interprets it. Because one of the things, when you read the ordinance, it does say that anyone in the public, any group, or anyone in the public can nominate a building as a landmark. And then, once it's nominated, the papers are filled out, it comes to us, we research it, and then we make a recommendation to the council, and then the council approves it. But we were told that that wasn't how it worked, in fact, that the property owner had to nominate, and that they had to sign the nomination, so that basically, there can't be any nomination of a historic property without, without the landowner giving their approval to that. And to me, that really affects the whole nature of this being a public benefit to landmark these homes and these businesses. It's for the public's benefit. A case in point is the Ojai Unified School District offices. The only way that could become a landmark under your practice here would be if the school district offered to landmark it. But to me, the public, the one building, I keep getting more and more people saying is, they really think that building should be evaluated for its historic value. But according to the staff, it doesn't work that way, and that we could not nominate it and have it considered. Now, under the law, the owner has the right to object, and can come and state their objections, but the council should make its decisions on the merits of the case, and not just whether or not the landowner wants it. So there's that, that disconnect there that makes it not a public benefit, but a benefit of the owner of the property. And so you find that more and more of the people that nominate their own homes are people who want the tax benefit, and a lot of these really valuable historic homes are just, we're unable to really deal with them. And so we keep trying to look for ways, what can we trigger, so that we can at least look for these properties and look at them and review them, whether it's 50 years, whether it's on the historic survey, some way that we can come before us so that they can be evaluated without the owner having to get their permission.
Yes, Councilmember Wyrick?
Yeah, I think that's a perfect example of where you are, the advisory commission, to us, the council. We had an exchange of emails on this very issue, just full disclosure to the public, and, and you used the phrase, "It looked like there was an unwritten policy by staff." That was your very phrase. And I replied to you, "Unwritten policy is an oxymoron. Staff doesn't make policy." And so if there appears to be an issue from the commission perspective, that staff is making policy, the proper venue is to, is to come to us and say, "We need help with this. It appears that this is going on, and it shouldn't."
Well, that's why we're here.
And that's why we're here. And I, and that's why I keep emphasizing, but, but you had the, it acted, the response you get was like, "Well, this is just something that the commission has accepted for years." And I'm, and I think that's what needs to change, is the commission sees a problem with how the ordinances are written, how staff is performing with respect to interpretation of those issues. The appropriate thing to do is to come to the council. You're our advisors. You know, the staff is a resource for you, you do not report to the staff. You know, we just need to keep all of this clear. And I think this is a perfect example.
Thank you. Councilmember Haney?
I just have a couple of comments, and.
Mike?
Rose was gobbling all the microphone. She's like, "I can't take you anywhere," you know that? Terrence, first of all, I want to thank you for the clarity on how you, on your explanation here is, we identify, we research, we discuss, we meet, we discuss, we vote, and we stipulate. And I guess one of the problems I have, and maybe one of the problems we might have with the other 21 historical sites, is some form of a written agreement as to what an owner of one of these sites can do and what they can't do. And I think that was one of my bigger concerns with the NEF Lounge. I saw no agreement anywhere stating what the Crown family was allowed to do to that site, specific to any alteration interior-wise. Exterior-wise, it was pretty clear. Interior-wise, I had, I had some issues with that. But, so I would say you might have the same issue with 20 other, 21 other sites, is having this stuff in writing, going back and actually visiting these sites. And then I wanted to, Mr. Beard, if, I agreed with him. I'm sorry, sir. I'll correct that in my writing, too, but I, Mr. Beam's comment was pretty much the same thing. If you have two entities looking at a site, you have to come to some form of agreement as to what you're going to do with that site. I don't think it's fair for the city to say, "We want your site, and we're going to condition it to the way we want it." And I don't think it's fair for you coming to the city and saying, "I want my site landmarked, and these are my conditions." They have to be worked out as a, as a unit. They've got to be worked out as, "This is what's in our city's best interest." And I'd like to see that on all 21, if not all 22 landmarks. I think it would clear the air and remove a lot of gray. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember.
About the 12-month rule. Frankly, I think, I can understand, I remember, I, too, watched the meetings, even. Even if I'm not in attendance, I always watch them. And I remember Mr. Howard commenting about the 12-month rule, and he said that he was even concerned that it didn't pass the something or other test. Mr. Howard, there's a name for it. You had- Thank you. Rational basis test. Was this, was this a reasonable amount of time to demand from somebody and it could fall apart in a court of law as not following the rational basis test? So again, to echo what Mr. Wyrick is saying, there's clearly a problem with the 12-month rule. I understand the purpose for that 12-month rule. If that 12-month rule had passed the rational something or other test and had been clearly written in a way that people could understand, I don't think the NEFLounge issue would happen because staff could have clearly stated, "I'm sorry, Mr. Crown, but we have this policy and it's going to take 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, because this is an historic structure, before you can set your hands on it." And, and this is the kind of thing that I think Mr. Wyrick is talking about. That this was a boondoggle. I think we all recognize it was a boondoggle, but I think the good thing about it is we now know we've got a boondoggle here and we can now say to you, "Come up with it. Give us the advice. Research it. Tell us what you think the corrections need to be made on this ordinance to make it stronger, to make sure that this doesn't happen again." Because there are bigger, not necessarily more important buildings, but there are other buildings like Mr. Walker stated, Chaparral School. That one's going to come down the pike. So I think we need to get on it. And as Mr. Wyrick says, that is your job to advise us. This is what we have researched and this is what we feel needs to be changed in this document in order to strengthen our historic ordinance so this doesn't happen again and we can protect our historic structures into the future. That is your job and we are ready to listen because I think we all feel strongly that this community needs to be protected. And it's going to become more and more difficult as time goes by without such pressures. And that if we don't have strong ordinances, we're going to see more of these buildings destroyed in some way, shape, or form, in a certain percentage of them, it's going to be destroyed. So I think it's really important, you're an important commission to us. We need you. But as Mr. Wyrick said, it's not our job.
Are we to hire our own attorneys? Is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
He's an attorney.
You have a city attorney. You are part, you are one of his-
So we can instruct him to review our ordinances?
Through the city manager.
May I ask who's conducting the meeting?
Yes, I will be conducting the meeting. Yes.
When you get a chance, could I comment?
Yes, I believe Vice Chair Walker was going to come and then we'll go back to you.
I just wanted to say that, would they talk about, well, what agreements are in there about what can be changed and what can't? And I think it's hard to anticipate every possible change, but generally we follow the Secretary of the Interior standards. So if a building is historic, it's been designated as a historic building and if someone comes to us with a proposal, we try to evaluate it in terms of that, not whether you could remove this wall or that wall. And so part of what the Secretary of the Interior standards is, is whether or not the work that's being proposed is compatible with the historic nature of the property, it's compatible with the building itself and its integrity. And I think those are the standards that we use. And a case in point is like the, the old firehouse. There's no way you could anticipate every use that a owner would want to use, but it's been through a pottery store, it's been through a museum, it's been through a firehouse. And yet they've managed to maintain the basic integrity of that building, even though they've changed things on the inside and the windows where the bay doors were for the fire trucks. But we look at it and we say, "Does this still keep the, the historic intent of the, of the building?" I think those are the kind of things we do rather than try to, try to be too specific because it's hard to really anticipate. But we use the Secretary of the Interior standards is what we try to do.
Commissioner Aiken?
Just a couple of things. One, I find it interesting that the, the Historic Preservation Commissioners are being, in my word, lectured on what our responsibility is. We met with a planning commission for two and a half hours in a hastily arranged meeting to discuss this, did much research to prepare for that meeting. We voted unanimously on a decision. The planning commission voted unanimously on that decision. So that vote gives some credence to the efforts that we took and the responsibility we took in adhering to those, to the charge that we have as commissioners. I'm holding this newspaper. It's Ojai Valley News. It goes to what Councilmember Clapp said, a quote says, "Board Vice President Linda Taylor agreed a conversation with the HPC was merited, but ultimately the decision of what to do with various Ojai Unified School District properties rests with the board." That's kind of a bit of the sense that we got. We have our responsibilities. We fulfilled our responsibilities. We provided advice to the city council. Again, meeting in a quickly arranged joint meeting, I think we did what we were responsible to, acting on the guidance that we had at that time and that we understood, including having two people who have served on the Historic Preservation Commission meeting for over 40 years together.
And Commissioner Aiken, I understand that, and I don't think we're referring to your recommendations on the NEFLounge. I think we're just referring to if there's something that we need to work on in the ordinance or with the grievance, the provisions and the agreements, we want that, we want to hear from you. We do value your opinion, even though this situation, we didn't. It doesn't mean that we disvalue you as a commission. That's completely, at least for me, speaking as a, as an individual council member, I, I, I still value your input and if there is some loopholes, that's what we want clarity. That's where we want advice. And to, to refer back to what Chairman McCready said about hiring your own lawyers, we're not talking about that. We don't want, this isn't a back and forth argument. We want advice and then we want to support you by giving you those resources. You guys volunteer. And we appreciate you giving up your time to the city to protecting landmark items, structures, whatever it is. We, we want to make sure that we identify what we need to fix and then go from there. And that's why we're, we have this joint meeting to see if we could identify those items. And, and you guys do have a list.
We do.
So that's why I wanted to see if you guys wanted to go by list by list and elaborate and so that we could communicate and, and potentially get to some type of agreement on where we should proceed. That's where I-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, I agree completely with what you're saying. The, you know, the, the rancor that I may be feeling generates more from being lectured during this meeting rather than the decision that took place for the NEFLounge. And I believe that what you're asking for and what number four calls for is exactly what Commissioner Hill was asking Mr. Howard about before he was interrupted in his questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I think what is really needed from, from the commission is that there was a situation where you and the planning commission felt very strongly that something shouldn't be done. And whatever reason, when it came to us, and we looked at it as objectively as we could, and believe me, I'm 100% historic preservation. There was, in looking at it as objectively as I possibly could for the benefit of the applicant and taking nothing about the Inn into consideration as far as my decision was concerned, whether they paid one dime a tax or not, didn't come into play at all for me. I looked at the situation and the first thing that I evaluated after hearing everything was, "All right, is this something that they're asking for that legally they have the right to do?" And that's where I think we're talking about needing to firm up whatever it is that we need to firm up. And that's where we need, that's where I would like guidance from you. You want to make, you as a commission want to make sure that the NEFLounges never happen again, from your standpoint. So what we need is what, what needed to be in place at the time that when it came to us, we would have said, "Well, they just can't do that." Or through community development, they would have been told, "You can't take that wall out. That's, it's a designated landmark and you just can't do it." But that wasn't the case here. So somehow the system failed what the commission was trying to do. And all I'm looking at is, we've got ordinances that can be rewritten. We've got agreements that we make sure for any future landmark designation are written in such a way that the city and the, and the property owner know exactly what the limitations are. And we also put into some sort of a process a vehicle that does what the Historic Preservation Commission really wants it to do. And I think between all the wealth of knowledge on our commission, that if you can come up with that, say, "Okay, well, if this had been in place, this would have, this wouldn't have happened." Those kinds of things would be really, really helpful. And I've got to believe there's other cities out there that have better ordinances that we do, have a better process than we do. I know growing up in New England, you know, you could hardly do anything in any of those small New England villages of, you know, a couple thousand people without it triggering, you know, all kinds of historic preservation type of public hearings and things. So I just think we need to put our heads together now, together as a commission and looking to you to come back to us with, "Here's what we need" in order to assure that what we want happens in the future. And if we can do that, I will guarantee, I can't guarantee, I'm only one, but I will tell you that I believe that this council will be very receptive to that.
I think one of the things that's been frustrating to us too is the enforcement of the, of the code. Because as an example, it's very clear in the code. I don't know how you could make it more clear in the code that any work on a landmark that alters or adds to that property needs to come before the commission to get a work order. And yet there's a property owner who has one of our landmarks, who built a six-foot wall and did not come for a permit. And they've been allowed to just go ahead and get it permitted retroactively. However, it completely ignores the part of the law that says that unless they put it back right, it's $1,000 a day fine for that person. I mean, it's written so clearly, there's no other way it could be interpreted. And yet we find it very frustrating that this wall gets built and we are not able to get the city to just go tell these people or even to say, "Look, you've got Mills Act. You're getting a tax benefit." They get like 50% of their property taxes to maintain this building for the benefit of the people of Ojai and they build this huge wall. And, you know, should we look at rescinding their Mills Act status? Because-
Mr. Mayor?
You know, these are all things that are frustrating to us because we don't see that there's the enforcement of it.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly. Craig is, I know the wall you're talking about. They've been given a retroactive permit?
Well, they said, the city said it was resolved. And yet they have never come before us. They've never insisted that they take it down. It's allowed to stay there. The problem was is that they did follow the city code, which was, they built the wall according to city code. But that's a whole different part of the code. That's not the historic preservation code, which says you cannot come and do an addition like that to your property without coming. Because we have to look at it and make sure it's in keeping with the histor, history of the property and that it fits in and it's compatible. So we have to give them that work permit. But they never got it. They never appeared. And they're not getting the, the punishment. There was another case where the-
The man, I'll interject here real quickly. With council's pleasure, I would like to have staff come back with a report on this matter. I would like to know what's going on with this wall. Could you do that, please? Okay.
And there was another case where-
And please feel free to make those requests.
Well, yeah.
And also, the other thing is-
We do.
Ask council, please, would you consider making that request? Please.
But there's, you know, and then there's other cities like Los Angeles that if you, without the proper permit, if you destroy or damage a historic resource, you've got a five-year moratorium for any building permit on your property, automatic, because you can't undo something like that. And maybe that's something we need to look at, but it's too often that people-
Excuse me for interrupting. I think this is exactly what Mr. Wyrick was talking about, that these are the kinds of things that you, as a body, if you put in a recommendation to us about how you feel our historic preservation ordinance can be strengthened, this is a, a really good example of the kinds of things that you can do to help, help us do that.
Pardon me for interrupting. We've talked about this particular issue on numerous meetings, numerous times. So-
About the wall?
Yes. And then on that, on that particular one with the wall, we were told that staff would look into it. And then two months later, I brought it up again and they said, "Oh, that was resolved." And we didn't have any idea that it was resolved. But they said, "Oh, that was resolved." I said, "What do you mean it was resolved?" "Well, we looked at it and it fit the city code." So we said, "Well, they never came to us to get a permit or never were asked."
Real, real important, important clarification here is you don't issue the permit. You give a recommendation.
No, no, no. The work, we, we do give the work order from the historic preservation point of view. When they come to do works on a historic landmark, they need to get a work permit from us. They can appeal it to you, but-
I see. Okay.
They need to get a work permit. That's what the Inn was trying to get for their landmark.
I see. Okay.
And we denied that work permit and they came and got it from you.
I see. Okay. Important, important clarification. Thank you.
I'd like to comment about the walls. The Libby Gate House is a landmark with the Mills Act. And I think it got permits, I don't know, but now there's a huge wall. You cannot see the landmark. And I think private homeowners are going to start building more walls so the public cannot go by and see their property. And that's not right.
And it's hard because there's another gentleman that has come to us wanting to build such a wall around his landmark and we denied that work permit to him. And then he looks across the street and sees these people just put one up without a permit and nobody's making them take it down.
Okay, real, real quickly, so we can move on to other people that have a comment. I believe that there's going to be something coming before council about this very matter, about a potential moratorium on fences and walls.
Yeah, the March 10th meeting.
It's going to come before council about potential, could you explain, please?
The city council asked for a discussion item about the possibility of a moratorium on walls in the Arbolata area pending completion of the neighborhood planning process. Because the neighborhood planning process will be addressing walls, hedges, and fences and things like that on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis.
I don't think it should be just exclusive to the Arbolata though. Do we say specifically? Because we also have Foothill Road.
That was my understanding, but we can certainly expand it if that's what the council desires.
I think it should be overall because there are properties that are outside of the Arbolata that maybe would fall into that category of importance.
Kitty, Mike?
Well, we're going to get a report from them.
Councilmember Wyrick?
I'd ask you a question. Was there ever an issue about the Mills Act contract having any ambiguity about whether it covered walls or not? And then that gets to the issue that we've been raising. Is there something we need to improve?
But the point is-
In terms of how these documents are written, so to remove that ambiguity, if that it did exist in any way?
The Mills Act says that the property has to be evaluated in terms of the Secretary of the Interior standards. The Secretary of the Interior standards say that any addition has to be compatible historically, visually, has to be compatible with what's there. So whether or not, you don't necessarily have to say the wall is included, the wall is not. It may even be possible for them to build a wall. We might even let them build a wall. But we would want to make sure that that wall wasn't something that was totally out of character. And for us, when you go back and look at the walls that were built in the Arbolata originally, there were all these three-foot rubble walls that were built. And now someone comes and they want, they have a landmark that's actually a landmark, which is supposed to maintain the historic integrity and they build a six-foot wall. That's not compatible, I'm sorry, with the history and the-
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Clark, I've got a question for you. If, if somebody owns a landmark property and part of our code says that you can build a six-foot wall as long as it's not in the front edge and you don't put it in the front setback, you can have a three-foot wall or whatever without even getting a permit, correct?
That's right.
Then how is somebody going to enforce that? If someone has a landmark property but doesn't realize that they can't do that, so they do it, they're not coming in to get a permit. They're not coming before the, the Historic Preservation Commission for any kind of a work order. They're just doing it. And if they don't realize that they, that they can't, then what do we do? Tell them to take it down?
So I think, I think it goes back to what you were discussing earlier, the need for clarity in the landmark designations. So if there's, if there's an agreement that defines- So if there's, if there's an agreement that defines clearly that the wall is part of the landmark item, I think that we would have the enforcement tool that we need.
Look at the Secretary. Secretary of the Interior standards, they talk about the whole visual effect of the property. And to have to go in and say, well, it includes history or it includes that, they just have, it says right in your law that any addition or any change needs to come and have that approved by the commission, just so that we can make sure it's compatible. Not that we say you can't build a wall, but to make sure that it fits in.
Yes, Councilmember Clapp?
This is another really good example of how you're so important to us. Because when somebody purchases a piece of property, that is a landmark designated property, if the Board of Realtors could be given a brochure for the persons that purchase these historic properties, that lays out what they can and cannot do. Or if they have any questions, where they go to get these questions answered. That's something that's extremely valuable, because then you could avoid having that kind of miscommunication. So that's another kind of idea that can be, come out of this commission to help support the historic designation, the preservation of it, and avoid these kinds of problems occurring in the future.
Yes, I have a question for staff, Rob. So if, for example, we're using this, somebody else builds a six-foot wall on their property, are they then to go to their agreement or to the Secretary of the Interior standards?
So are you asking that the person who owns the landmark property is building a wall on their property?
Yes.
I would stand by my previous answer, that it needs to be clearly defined in whatever agreement accompanies the landmarking.
And the point being, again, if we need to identify some of the things that are not clear, we need to look into them. And if we're not including some language or a document on the provisions, we need to figure out how to include that. And we have to always bear in mind that, even though, and this goes for every commission, is we might have some advice for a council, but we're always going to have to put it at a public hearing. So we're always going to have public comment. So it's not a matter of us too, it's also a matter of engaging the community and seeing if there is enough support to do or to include this language. So we want to be clear that it's not just up to the commission and council. We do want to hear from the public in terms of that. But again, being, I think we hear you loud and clear that it is included in the Secretary of Interior standards. But we need to identify, and we need to look at the whole document to see if there's other language in that document that could affect some of the provisions in the agreement.
Well, I think it's just in your, in your, in your law, too. I think all you need to tell them is that if you want to make addition, just like what it says in the law, if you want to make an addition, or you want to demolish something, or you want to make an alteration of it, aside from just normal repairs and maintenance, you have to come and get a work permit for that.
One other question of staff real quick. How do we even know that if a landmark changes hands, that the person that buys it knows it's a landmark? How would we ever even know that? And what would be the incentive for a seller to tell someone that?
I would assume that's the kind of disclosure that has to be made as part of a real estate transaction.
What if it's not?
Never assume.
They've all got plaques on the wall.
That's a good question. I really don't have any better answer than that.
The Mills Act follows, on a sale, the next person maintains that Mills Act, so they would know that they have a landmark property.
Mayor? But we don't know.
Yes.
I just want to let you know that both documents are recorded, the landmark and the Mills Act, and so it runs with the property.
There you go.
Yeah, and then Councilmember Amy had a comment.
You know, I just want, I had one question to Chair Darwin is, how often?
McCready, thank you.
Okay. So the, how often do you guys go back and visit these sites once they're designated? That'd be my first question. And then the second question is, you know, I got your HPC guidelines here, Section 48-05, and everything that we're talking about tonight is in these guidelines. I don't know why we keep referring to state guidelines when we have them ourselves. They're right here in our own ordinance. I'd be concerned that if, that maybe we don't know what's in our ordinance from a planning commission standpoint. I'd be concerned that maybe that's something that the planning commission might want to do, is take the opportunity to review them and get a better understanding as to what is and what isn't, and what we might do better. We, not you, we. I think that'd take this conversation a long way.
Chair McCready?
No, thank you.
Okay.
But I do want to say one thing about the Secretary of the Interior standards. I can't imagine that in the three years that I've been on the commission that there has been one meeting that we didn't mention that phrase. So to think that this is news to the council is surprising to me, the Secretary of the Interior standards. It's something, it's a phrase that we use whenever an applicant comes before us.
Well, I guess, I guess my concern is that we're allowing the Secretary of State standards to be the guiding light, the shining light when we have our own. If we're going to use the Secretary of State standards, why don't we take these and get rid of them?
It's a standard.
That's my argument.
I'm trying to answer your question, sir.
If we're going to go to someone else's source, then let's remove ours.
And we do have a limited time now, so I just want to make sure that we have a lot. We haven't heard from specific commissioners, so I want to give, I want to open the floor to see if any of them have any input or any observations or anything else that you want to add. Because we will be coming to a close, and then, no, no. Well, I do want to wrap this up, and I'm going to go back to Vice Chair.
Mr. Mayor? There is one item here that I think is important we addressed. It's item number one. We're coming up on our 2015-16 budget, and they've asked if there is a possibility that there would be availability of funds to attend training programs. And I would like to briefly discuss that in the last few minutes about the potentiality of, in the future budget, that we designate a certain amount of funds for this, to the HPC.
Okay. Would you guys want to elaborate on that item?
Yeah, if we could clarify.
Yeah. Anybody want to take?
Well, I know Mr. Masacha and Mr. Walker attended the, attended one, and, oh, wait, I'm sorry.
I was going to say staff, I'd be happy to, you know, as a liaison currently for HPC. The HPC is always interested in getting additional staff training, as well as staff is also. And so I prepared a little memo that Rob asked me to do regarding the training, Commissioner Walker and Chair McCready, and I think, did you go last year? Or some, or maybe it was, you went, I'm sorry, three went. And so I just prepared it, there's a two-day class at USC, there's a three-day class at USC. Those that went last year would go to something different than they went to last year, if they were to go again. And so I just prepared this memo that just says if they were attending the two-day class, for all seven of them to go, it'd be $5,000 with some change. That's including lodging classes, meals, and transportation. If there were, to attend the three-day classes, it'd be $8,000. So any there, anywhere in between, and that could go a little bit lower if people carpool together, because there's transportation costs involved in that, too. I will say that also, we are, the state of California is coming in April to do training for staff and commission to the city of Ojai, and they're going to be reaching out to other cities. It's a, you know, it's going to be here, but it's for everybody. It's a training opportunity they're going to come and do. And so that is available to the commissioners, too, and we're trying to work out the facilities and working with the state as far as, you know, all the mechanics of how to get there. So I will offer that, that is the cost for them to do, and I don't know who's available to go. And the dates are July 14th, 15th, and 18th, and July 16th and 17th.
Okay. I do want to make sure we're right at seven o'clock, and I want to make sure. I know this is an important item, and it sounds like it could take a little longer. But if we want to come back with your recommendations, my questions would be, how many would want to attend? And we'd have to obviously look at our budget. And I'm all for trainings, I think it's really important to offer any of our commissioners. And the possibility of bringing one of those instructors here is also an opportunity to see if more of the commission could benefit from these trainings. So I want to see what you guys, what's the pleasure of the commission, and come back to us, because I think that's important for us to look at and see if it fits on our budget. And I just, just to close, some remarks, just real quick. Yes, Councilmember Clapp?
I'm sorry, one real quick thing, I promise to be very brief. Also, number five, establishment of historic districts. I'd like to remind the commission that we are doing the neighborhood planning, and that I think it's really important that you weigh in on the neighborhood planning. This is a time to speak up about what you feel is important about historic districts, because this is what we're doing in the next several months.
I think just to close the meeting, it's really important to start moving forward, just like Chair McCready said, and look at what we could do to fix the policies in front of the agreements. And we want to hear from you and your suggestions. So I think that's going to be step number one. There's a lot to do, obviously, and we want to make sure that we are productive and that we don't waste anybody's time in doing so. So it would be, it would be great, and then I think in general, we'll try as a council, and hopefully, the liaison to Historic Preservation Commission could give you a list of what the city's working on right now, like the neighborhood planning program that we're working on, because it does affect the characters of our neighborhoods and historic landmarks. So it would be great to have your input. And I truly appreciate you guys taking your time and volunteering all this extra time to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.